Good evening. In accordance with the provision of the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 1046, PL 1975, C 231 S 1 amended 2006, C 70 S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement: Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lotaraca, Ms. Lozinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Atien, Ms. Lopez Anderson.
I'm going to start with Mr. Lotaraca for committee chairs. Report please.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met. Minutes have been put out. We're putting out an RFP for an energy services company. This is the first step in the process to improve our energy savings throughout all district buildings and be able to fund the cost of any improvements through energy savings over time. We've also done the RFP for insurance brokers. Want to focus on their commitment to an employee wellness program that can improve our overall rating. We've had four brokers. Of the 11 brokers, we're interviewing four. All four of those were submissions that did not require any additional funding by the school district if accepted. And we're going to conduct those interviews the week of May 27th after Memorial Day. You'll see on your agenda, as part of a state requirement, there's just a reporting of all awarded contracts by the district. So if you've looked through those, it's simply an approval that those are our current contracts that have been awarded, and we're required to do that each year by the state. With regard to other topics, we are moving ahead with electronic sign-in system for employees, which will make it much more efficient and much more accurate to make sure employees are in on time where they're supposed to be. And there are, I believe, two companies being interviewed. We also touched on the chief school administrator evaluation process. Superintendent will complete her evaluation, and then board members will make their assessment. And I believe there will be a committee appointed among board members to put together the summary of the board's evaluation. We briefly discussed Jersey City has now filed their own separate lawsuit with regard to school funding. It could be just due diligence to see what are the claims? What is the basis for that lawsuit? Although we're much smaller, obviously, we have some of the same issues in terms of a renaissance in terms of businesses and property values going up and reduction in state aid to the school. In that regard, then, the final point, we had a discussion that we thought perhaps a small group, a committee of the board or some individuals could be clearly identified as LIAASAN's II municipal government. As we move ahead, the substantial budgetary issues are going to involve municipal cooperation, input, and assistance, and whether that might be an approach for the board moving forward. And that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. In regards to the Municipal Committee meeting, that is something that we need to further investigate, and I would like to speak with Board Council before moving further with that. And we'll discuss that greater or less at our June meeting. Ms. Lozinski, policy.
The only thing on the agenda is the second reading of the transgender student policy. Adam went through it and made sure that all the definitions we were concerned with are integrated in the one that came from Strauss Estme. And that's about it on the agenda today.
Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. Mr. Hastings, would you?
I believe Mr. Lotaraca has chaired the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Oh, okay. So would you mind?
I filled in for...
Ms. Atien.
...the committee, Ms. Atien, who had to leave. At our meeting, there were no facility use requests, but I believe one has come up. Did everyone get that in the email? And that can be discussed a bit. We have the cement floor board for the garage area of the Fourth Avenue building. And finally, if you noticed back in November, the November state election included a ballot issue about funding for security issues. And so grants are now available, and we'll be applying for a security grant so that we can complete the project of having all security cameras at all schools. And that'll be the basis for that grant. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca.
Could I just note that we have cameras at all schools, security systems at all schools, but we're moving to a more standardized system. So this grant will pay for us to speed that project forward instead of doing it year over year.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Mr. Pinkney, curriculum.
At the curriculum meeting, we discussed a few conferences for approval and a few grants as well. Some of the grants were to develop and submit an application for the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program, 2019 through 2020 continuation grant. That grant will continue to fund 21st Century Community Learning Centers after, before school, and summer academic programs, coupled with cultural, artistic, positive youth development, health, and parental involvement activities. So many other grants were developed and submitted amendment to the current Perkins Fiscal Year 2019 grant application, and also development and submission of a new fiscal year 2020 Perkins grant application. Also, development and submission of an application for the AmeriCorps Formula Grant, which projects that engage, with projects that engage AmeriCorps members in an evidence-informed and evidence-based approach to providing a service intervention that will result in intended solutions to community problems. Also, to develop and apply for a New Jersey Schools Insurance Group Safety Grant and development and submission of a Stop School Violence Prevention Program, which is designed to provide funding to improve security at schools and on school grounds in the grantee's jurisdiction through evidence-based school safety programs. Also, seek approval for summer ELL testing grades K through 12 in order to determine eligibility and appropriate placement of new incoming students to the district. Also seeking board approval for Community YMCA and Asbury Park School District to provide swimming lesson sessions for pre-K students, K-2 students, and also approval for Lakewood Music Academy to conduct an enrichment music program for pre-K ESY summer school students, K-2 summer school students, and also TLAA summer school students in grades 3 through 5, and also grades 6 through 8. Also looking for approval for professional development provided for the STEAM pre-K and K-2 after-school program coordinators. And also approval for Tony Terry to accompany Dream Academy students to the Brookdale Community College for the duration of their summer sessions, and also to high school students to participate in New Jersey State Federation of Women's Club mini-college experience, and also discuss class trips. That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. And now public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. So, community, if you have a comment, please come to the lectern and your name, address. You have three minutes. You can't, you couldn't hear me? Just, I'll repeat the instructions. Okay. Get my glasses. This is the public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Please, as you are, Ms. Rita, at the lectern, your name, address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Rita Morano, 8th Avenue, Asbury Park. There's a lot of rumors flying around, and I'd like to know if they're true, that in the third quarter, we're going to get reassessed for the lack of the school funding. And I want to know if that's true. The other thing is, I'd like to know, is there a plan, if this is true, to, you know, at least try to reduce your expenses? I don't know what your plan would be. I'm not familiar with school budgets. And the other thing I'd like to know, there's a lot of rumors flying around. One of them is, how many secretaries are in the board office? And how many administrators? That's been a big rumor. I'd like to know the answer to that. And I'd like to know the enrollment of the whole school district. And I'd say, is there an answer? You know, you can't hear it. You're very blurred, and it's not clear. Who answers?
Sure. Over here.
Oh.
Hi, I'm Jeff Hastings. I'm the business administrator, so I can address some of the issues. I can't address all those issues for you. You mentioned a question about a reassessment taking place. The district does not assess or do reassessments. Reassessments would be done by the municipality. So if they're going to do a reassessment, that would come through their offices, and the city could give you better information when those reassessments would take place. In terms of the budget and the expenses, the district is moving to reduce expenses and expenditures year over year in terms of how much is spent on all sorts of services. But there's a change in the school funding formula. So the school funding formula has come up with what the state is saying the district should have as a total budget. So the state is saying the budget should be run on about $45 million. And then the state says, through their formulas, how much should be contributed by the local taxpayers, and then how much after that they would expect to contribute in state aid. So in terms of taxes, the issue is that the state is assessing, maybe assessing isn't the right word, but through their formula, they're saying that the local contribution from taxpayers should be significantly higher than what it currently is. So the state figures are based on that $45 million. They say we need to run the district. And they're saying the local taxpayers should contribute about $20 million. Currently, the taxpayers contribute about eight, and I believe 8.8 was just approved in the budget for next year. So you can see there's a significant gap in what the state is expecting the local taxpayers to pay and what we're currently paying. The second issue, the second issue on that is the loss of state aid. So across the state, there was something called Adjustment Aid that was provided to numerous districts to help offset changes in funding. Part of that current change in the school law, school funding law, is to get rid of that money. So the district currently receives about $23 million in that Adjustment Aid, and the state is saying over the next six years, they want to reduce that to zero. So last year, the district lost about $2 million. This year, for 2020, the district is losing about $3 million, and that will continue to go on over the next six years until that $23 million has been eliminated from the state funding source. So we sort of have two things going on. One is the state is saying that the local municipality and the local taxpayers should contribute more toward the budget. And they're also saying we should be losing a certain amount of state aid. So those numbers are coming down as well. So the district is looking at all items. There's no one area to be addressed in terms of, you know, cut something at the high school or cut something at administrative offices or cut something at an elementary school. These cuts are going to have to take place across the district. And that's what we're doing, and that's what we're looking at.
Do you know how many, how the assessment's going to work for each household? I mean, are we all going to be assessed the same amount of money? Or are some going to?
No, the school portion of your total taxes is going to be 54 cents per $100 of assessed value. So they're going to take that 54 cents and apply that to the assessed value of your home. So that will differ from home to home, from owner to owner, based on what your residence has been assessed at.
What about the pilot programs? They don't pay.
So pilot programs are payment in lieu of taxes are used by the city to attract development and then help those sorts of things. And those are negotiated through the city with the local developers who are looking to do things in the city. So the school board does not participate in those, and the school board does not receive any of that funding that would be received through those pilots.
So you're saying that the city gets the 95% of the pilot program, and the 5% goes to the county. Which part of it goes to schools?
None.
None?
None.
None, right?
Correct.
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, I don't know if you could do it, but this board should be working on that. We shouldn't have any more pilot programs in this city. There's too many now, and you're not getting the money.
Rita, my name is Sandra Gray. I'm the superintendent of schools. I want to thank you so much for taking the time to come out tonight and ask the board questions. We encourage public participation. We welcome public participation. And there are some components of what you've asked that I'm not at liberty to get into details with about now, at this particular time. But I do want to say that we are constantly looking to do more with less as well as we're looking to expand shared services when and where possible. And so next month, I will be addressing the board, the full board, in terms of the plan. Because you just, you made some references, and you commented about some of the things that you're feeling. You hear rumors, word on the street. And I want to let you know that next month's board meeting, I will be addressing the full board to discuss the four-year plan moving forward under my leadership that will address some of the questions that you've raised in your comments tonight.
Okay, I just have one more. Do we still have a monitor?
Yeah.
This is the state monitor to my right.
We do have one? Because I tried to call a few times, but you don't seem to respond to any phone calls.
I have not received one phone call from you. I'm sorry. I don't know whether you're getting through and leaving a message. If you are, please let me know, because I'm there every day.
Well, I don't know. I called you. I don't know if you're the same one. Have you been the same one for a year?
Yes.
Well, I think I called you, and I never got an answer. So that's okay. What do we need a monitor for?
A lot of people ask that question.
Yes. But thank you very much, Rita.
Okay. This will close public participation.
Okay, my name's Gloria Uranian, 1603 Whip Street. I just had some general questions, just from my own personal knowledge. What do we pay per student every year, per student, to educate one student? Do we have a dollar figure on per student?
So the state calculates those figures, and they publish those every year. It's called the, I can get to the information. It escapes me right now, but there's a report on the DOE site that shows the cost across the state for all schools. So they take the total expenditures, the total amount of money spent by the district during a school year, and then they divide that by the number of students. So the district has hovered between as low as 28,000 and maybe as high as 33 over the past several years.
Okay, so it's a simple calculation. In other words, the total budget is divided by the amount of students, and that's how you come up with the number?
Yeah, there's some variations on that, but the number you're going to hear in the newspaper or, you know, from Governor Christie, for example, he used to talk about that a lot, is that that calculation.
Now, I heard something, I don't know if it's true or not. When a student starts school in a school district, and even if they drop out or move, that you're still responsible for the dollar value on that student till they finish? Is that true?
The short answer is no.
No?
Yes.
Okay. Because I had heard that from several sources, and it didn't sound right to me. It's not true. So if a student enters freshman year at the high school and doesn't finish, in other words, you're not paying for those four years for that student? Like, if he only went two years, we only pay two years?
That's correct. But I think what you may be blending together is when we talk about the cohort at the high school and its impact on the graduation rate. I think that might be where you may be combining that information. If a student leaves us, we don't pay for them.
Okay.
Our cohort becomes adjusted at that point.
And the other question was?
In the case of a student being homeless, then that may be. But that's not to perpetuity. There's one year allowance for that.
Okay, good, okay. And it's, you know, you read the press, and you see Lakewood Township getting $30 million, and they're buying therapy ponies. I mean, why were we taking so much money away from us? I don't understand it. No, seriously. I mean, has anybody actually gone down to the state and said to them, you know, "We want a detailed understanding of why you're doing this"? It's outrageous.
Yes, we have.
Uh-huh. And what's their response?
This has been signed into law under the S-2 bill. It's a two-pronged approach. So we are always looking to do more with less and being fiscally responsible as a school district. However, in order to be in compliance with the S-2 bill, it's not solely based on our cutting in terms of what we are spending in the district. There's also the second prong of this bill that has a responsibility or places responsibility on the community through the property taxes.
Hi, Ron Uranian from 1603 Whip Street in Asbury. I'm kind of shocked that the governor took away... I'm kind of shocked that the governor took away $3 million from you guys, and I was wondering why. And I think I got the answer there, that our assessments in the town went up, so he figures we are a rich town now, so you can afford to pay the extra $3 million this year and going forward because we've got such high assessments at Asbury Park. Okay, so I think I got the answer to that one. The governor is punishing us because our properties went up. Is that correct? Did I get that right?
It's, excuse me, sir. It's not the governor. The legislature passed that law. I mean, he signed it, but the legislature, the entire legislature, New Jersey Legislature is responsible for the law. It was not a one-person decision.
Okay. The amount of money that comes into this city, it's unfortunate. You guys have to make up the difference. But of course, it's the taxpayers that are going to pay. It was put out there that it was like 10% going to, our taxes are going to go higher. Okay? And so is there any way that you can trim your budget? Have you looked at trimming your budget so that the taxpayers are not going to get such a hit? Because apparently, the town is making all this money. They made $5 million on supposedly parking. And so they don't help you offset your loss. The taxpayer's got to pay the whole bill. Meanwhile, the developers take advantage of all the pluses, and we don't get any breaks on the taxes. That's a big concern for the taxpayers now. You raise taxes and continue to raise the taxes, you're not going to have any people left here. So I don't know how you're going to address it, but some efficiencies have to be put into the plan. And I don't know if you're looking at that, but it's important. Do you have any ideas on how you might be doing that?
Sir, forgive me. I didn't catch your name when you started initially because your mic wasn't up. I just want to go back and just explain. As the state monitor pointed out, this is a result of the S-2 bill, which was signed into law by the New Jersey State Legislature. It has two components to it. One is exactly what you talked about, the district and what we can control in terms of our spending. And we continue to look for ways to cut costs, to do more with less. And I will explain and give a much more comprehensive, detailed explanation in terms of where and how that forecast looks over the next four years. However, the bill is very clear in its language in that we cannot cut our way out of this responsibility. And so that second part has to do with the local fair share and requiring that of the taxpayers. That's outside of the purview of the school district and what we can do. It is now the law. And so to that extent, we must follow the law.
So what I understand you're saying is we can't cut it because of the state law? We can't use efficiencies to lower the budget because we may be minimizing the education we're giving everybody?
Wherever we can reduce our costs, we are doing that. But that is not enough in of itself to satisfy what the legislators have passed and signed into law. And so in order to be in compliance with the law, we have to do what you're proposing and the secondary piece, which is the state requires, the law requires that the local fair share be paid.
Okay. How does a district like Lakewood get $30 million from the governor? Okay? And it probably have a much worse district than Asbury Park. They're mismanaged terribly down there. But they get $30 million, they get a pony, and we get $3 million, and a lot of other towns got money taken away from them. Where does that fit into this picture? Did they ask the governor? Did they ask anybody in the legislature why they made that lopsided agreement?
Wherever we can, we work, we work with our legislators to see how, where, when we can address the needs of our district in the best way. But at this particular time, because it is now signed into law, we want to make sure that we are in compliance with the law and we have to follow the letter of the law. Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
Those are some of my questions. I don't know. Hope you can get to the bottom of some of this and save the taxpayers some money either with the council or the savings period. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight, and again, I want to encourage you to continue to come out and be a part of the conversation.
We'll get three minutes here. Is that correct? So I wasted 15 seconds complaining about that.
Your name and your address, sir, please.
What?
Your name and your address, please.
Well, I'm Ernest McNolly, 400 Deal Lake Drive. I'm also known as Professor McNolly at Graduate School of Education in St. Peters. I've been in education and communication and graduate education for probably, probably 40 years. So I know, I know a little bit about schools, but...
You can't hear me?
Yeah, well, it's not going to get any better, I can tell you that. So before my voice had some serious problems, I had a graduate class and I was asked to help them decipher and understand school report cards in the state of New Jersey. About 650 school districts, about 565 municipalities. And with their diligence, they looked into school report cards. And part of their projects for the graduate project was to analyze how equitably it was felt, they felt, based on statistics, that districts were reporting correctly, that testing was being done amicably, that funds were actually going where they were supposed to go, the amount of lawsuits, the analysis of the school report card, who was in charge, so to speak. And unfortunately, this district came up in the bottom 4%, I think, in performance in the state. Not counting for violence, murder, and, and other things happening. So they also, do you have any time left? Oh, okay. So I guess as educators, you're all aware that we operate under Abbott-Berk and there's constantly cases coming along and challenges and revisions and et cetera. But me living here and working in the field and seeing on a day-to-day basis what actually goes on in Asbury Park, I think there's a lot of logistical problems, a lot of community problems. I think Asbury, according to FBI statistics, is rated the second per capita most violent, dangerous place in the state. Neptune is number 15. You don't agree, sir? I don't know why sometimes I say things I got to comment. You don't agree with that?
I'm sorry, continue.
I thought I saw you shake your head no.
It's very hard for me to hear you, sir. I apologize.
Okay, I have a medical condition, so, okay. All right, so I said that Asbury Park, of 565 municipalities, FBI report, law enforcement statistic, current state data is that Asbury Park is number two of 565. That's not good.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment, sir.
This will now close the public participation.
Mr. Hastings?
Four or five minutes. Review of regular minutes.
Hey, good evening, board members. Any questions regarding items on page B1? B2?
I had a question on B1, if I may. Just to review the, the summer athletic coaches, the Wade and the other coach, that's for, is that for football? I'm just trying to, B1D, the summer athletic coach recommendations, equipment manager, and strength and conditioning. Is that for the fall sports or is that something else going on? I just...
Dr. Howard?
It's the summer. They do it every year.
Oh, okay. I was, just wasn't familiar with it, that's why I asked. The, I think I had one more. One question. I, the only question I had, the F, number F, the ESY program? I just, idea, because the list of teachers and stuff, do you know what the teacher-student ratio was last year? Like how successful it was or how many kids per teacher we had?
The ESY summer program is driven by the IEP. In order for us to be in compliance, we must provide students, based on their IEP, with this ESY program. And so the numbers are going to fluctuate based on what's in the student's IEP. We have to be in compliance with that.
Any other questions?
Any questions on B2? B3? B4?
I had a question on B3. I was wondering if, on B3A, I was wondering if, was it B3? Yeah, B33A. Are we going to go into exact for discussion on this individual or? And then I had another question.
No, there's not a plan to go into closed session about that.
Question about the transfer to the parent center. Are you, those individuals are going to be there permanently or is that just during the summer?
Permanent.
Okay, thank you.
B4? B5? B6?
I have a question. Uh, B6, number 24, these are past PD costs from December and April that we're paying. Is that what that is?
That is correct. There was a professional development that was provided and we needed to have this memorialized on our agenda.
I'm sorry, on that 24, did we have a total?
That was on a previous, that's on a previous agenda. I'll have to get back to you on the total.
But it's already been, they've already done the, maybe just for informational purposes.
Absolutely. I'll make sure we have that memorialized again on the June agenda.
I had one other question.
Yes.
26, there's different costs between 25 and 26 on the registration and I just saw a difference. I didn't know there, if there was a mistake or not per person.
No, there's no mistake there. The reason for the difference in cost has to do with the amount of time that they'll be spending. So 25 and 26 is a matter of days. 26, the person's staying for two days.
And there's a board member that's going to the Philly conference, the engineering, with the engineering teacher and Mr. Braggin? I'm sorry? I can't hear you.
Because of the timeframe and the time constraints, the resolution item reads one board member so that a board member that chooses to attend can have that opportunity. I wanted to make sure we were timely in getting the approval because these are very well-attended conferences and even now it's a little up in the air in terms of hotel, hotel stays. So I wanted to make sure we got that memorialized. Should a board member decide to attend, it's already been approved.
Is that something that County Superior do approve out of state travel?
Yes. This is why it has to be on the agenda. To allow time for all of that, the chain of approvals. It doesn't exceed the $5,000, but however, because it is out-of-state travel, you know, we do get ECS approval.
No, I understand. I just, I, you know, board members going out-of-state for travel with, you know, us asking taxpayers to pay more money, I just, it's just one of those things that I'm concerned about in the years to come. You know, outside, out-state travel, just in general, because it does add up.
Okay. B7?
I have a question about the model schools and also a board member going to, where is DC?
This year will be in Washington, DC. The addenda items on B8 and B9?
Their addendum?
Pardon?
I didn't know there was addendum. I didn't look at it. I didn't get an email today about that.
Yes.
Hold on.
The addenda items, with the exception of number one on B8, reflect summer school employment for the Summer Steam Academy. B1A is a very, has been a very, very challenging position for us to fill. We're very fortunate that we have someone now that we've secured. We want to make sure we get this individual approved so that they can begin the additional training that goes along and is required for them to do in June, the end of June into July.
Is there a little background on the person that you can give us, just so I kind of know?
This is, we haven't raised this person.
Is he, is he an employee?
Currently working as a substitute teacher in the district.
Mr. Hastings?
Are there any additional questions with regards to that portion of the agenda? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Hastings?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Superintendent. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the C-section, C1 through C5. I would point out on C3, some donations received by the district, some drawstring backpacks by the toy drive that will be used at the athletic banquet at homecoming next year. Some baseball equipment and softball equipment, as well as some scholarship funds for the high school and middle school. Those are on 9A, B, and C.
May I ask a question? I, can I, could you tell me, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask on B4A, the custodial job description. What was added or changed on that?
I can answer that. I was in that meeting. I can answer that one. The, the job description referred to the head custodian doing the evaluations and that was incorrect. So that had, that had to be changed. As you referred to, the change was from head, head custodians not doing the evals, it's...
A head custodian cannot evaluate someone in their unit. That had to come off.
So now it's the head of...
It's a collaboration, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's a collaboration with the principal and the supervisor of buildings and grounds.
I just had a question on your, the, the waiving of fees for the facility use. On their application, they, they didn't check they were a nonprofit, but in their letter they said they are. Did they provide the 501(c)(3) proof?
They did not. So unfortunately, as Mr. Lotaraca alluded to earlier in his committee report out, at the committee meeting, we did not have any applications. This came in later that day. This is good news radio, and they've used the facilities in the past over several years. And as you can see on the attachment, C13, they're looking for the 26th from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, doing a Mother's Day fundraising concert. The information is there along with the letter that Miss Lizinski alluded to, which is the third attached page. Would it be appropriate at this time, could I move to amend that item? Well, this is an open discussion, so whatever your comments are, we can incorporate into the meeting. I mean, I'm going to support waiver of the rental fees, but out-of-pocket expenses would have to be paid. If we're paying the custodians 1440, I would support this organization as to pay the 1440. And because they're in our, they're in our community, they're, they're a large part of the community we serve, be willing to waive the remainder of the fees, at the sense they're affiliated with the church and are having quite done the paperwork, but I'm comfortable that they're, they're a nonprofit, but...
So you're...
I would say out-of-pocket cost to the district will not be waived.
The room rental and the equipment?
Would be waived.
Would be waived, okay. Any discussion with that? Did you hear you, Miss Lizinski?
I would agree with that.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Pinkney? Okay.
Also, yes.
So we'll amend the resolution with the stipulation that they pay for the custodial and staffing costs. And if the board approves that and waiving the rental fee, we'll present that information to the group and go from there.
Mr. Hastings, just so we're clear, if you could also just ensure that we do receive a certificate of insurance naming Asbury Park Board of Education as an additional insured. As I do not believe that that should be waived. That's just me.
No, the insurance is never waived. I don't believe it's attached here, but my understanding is it's on file.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding with Mr. Hastings?
I'd just like to publicly thank the, the toy drive. Looks like two donations this month and I'm sure the district has as well, and that's what we're formally doing. But kind of a shout out to, into our co-board members, Connie and Barb, working on that organization. So that's much appreciated.
We will adjourn. Thank you. Four or five minutes. I need a motion. Okay, question, home favor. See you back at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 PL 1975 C231 S1, amended 2006 C70 S2. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, excuse me, 2019. Our mission statement, Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lotaraca, Miss Lizinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Etienne, Ms. Abes Anderson. Saunders, Ms. Etienne, Ms. Abes Anderson.
Our glad greetings to our right, United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Madam Superintendent, no presentation?
Yes, tonight we have one presentation. Dr. Howard will be presenting on the student safety data system and as well as our HIV report.
B1? Can you hear? All right, so as Ms. Gray stated, this is the SSDS report for period one for school year 2018, 2019, which consists of the time period, September 2018 to December 2018. Okay, so this is the district report. You'll see them later, broken down by building. So incidents as described by the state, the prior EVBR report, so it's violence, vandalism, substance offenses, weapons offenses, and confirmed HIV offenses. So that would be under the incidents category, and other or any other incidents that lead to ISS or OSS, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. And of course, HIV is your harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So as you see, for the period between September and December, the high school had three incidents, and 38 other. Middle school had 19 incidents, 17 other, and three HIV offenses. Barack Obama had one incident and zero other, and zero HIV. Bradley Elementary School had one incident and one other, three HIV instances, and Third and Marshall had zero incidents and one other and zero HIV. So we had a total for the district for period one, 24 incidents and 57 other. And so, at the high school, there's a comparison from 2017 to 2018, period one, and 2018, excuse me, 2018-19, period one. So the comparison was, we had nine incidents in 2017-18, and as you see, 2018, 2019, that went down by six. And other instances, again, that's the total OSS and ISS, it was 15, 57 in 2017-18, went down to 38 in 2018-2019. So that's a reduction of 19. HIV is the same. It was zero 2017, period one, and zero 2018-19, period one. Middle school, Dr. Martha King Middle School, in 2017, 2018, period one, there were 27 incidents, and period one for this year, there were 19 incidents, which was down minus eight incidents. For other category, 2018-19, period one, you had 54 other, and then 2018-19, you had 17. So that was, went down by 37. HIVs remain the same for the middle school. Bradley Elementary, 2018-19, 17-18 for period one, there was zero incidents, and there was one this year. And for other category, 2017-18 was zero, and this year there was one. And again, for HIV, 2017-18, there were zero, and that is up by three. Barack Obama, 2017-18, period one, there were five incidents. 2018-19, there was one incident, so that went down by four. Other, 2017-18, period one, there were 11 incidents. In 2018-19, there was zero. HIV remained the same at zero. Third and Marshall Elementary School, 2017-18, period one, zero incidents, and that remained the same for 18-19. For other category, 2017-18, period one, there was zero, and 2018-19, there was one. And that's also for HIV, there was zero in 2017-18, and one for 2018-19. So this is a three-year comparison. So for 2016-17, period one, there were 52 incidents. 2017-18, there were 41 incidents. In 2018-19, there are 24 incidents. And other category, 2016-17, there were 50 incidents. 2017-18, there were 122 incidents. In 2018-19, there were 57 incidents. HIV category, 2016-17, there were two incidents. 17-18, there were seven incidents. In 2018-19, there were six incidents. And what I did, I looked at 2019. So thus far, if you look at the suspensions here from January to May, it gives you kind of like the category of what's going on. So there were 10 suspensions in the high school in January, five in February, five in March, three in April, and three in May. And middle school, there were two, they went up to eight in February, nine in March, down two in April, and thus far, three in May. And Barack, excuse me, Bradley Elementary, there was one in January, zero in, sorry, one in February, one in March, zero in April, and zero in May. And if you look at Third and Marshall, there was zero in January, three in February, one in March, one in April, and one in May. So just kind of give you a snapshot, it's 2017 is so far looking better than the previous years, and that's due to the interventions that we have in place in the schools. Anyone have any questions? Thank you.
And my suspension, the, the report, the report covers, all the other statistics cover-
So, okay, so other, my-
I was just asking if all the other statistics covered period one?
Yes, because it requires that when we do period one, we have to do period, some September to December. So the one we'll do in next school year will cover period two, because that will go up into June.
And with the reports not having suspensions from period one?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Your report's not having suspensions from period one?
Yes, as I said, that's what this is about. So the incidents covers those suspensions that only deal with violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons offenses, or confirmed HIVs.
Suspensions are within?
Yes.
And now you're just giving us what's suspensions only-
Only.
For this second period?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And so I will just go right into the HIV that's in your agenda. There was an HIV at the middle school, and it was a confirmed HIV, and the action that was taken, there was parent conference and student council. Any questions?
Does that program seems to be working well with HIV?
I said that program seems to be working well?
Yes.
It's amazing. KYDS is working extremely well. They've been a very big part of what's going on.
Yeah, especially in the area of the suspensions, because that is one thing that I was very, felt very strongly about.
We do a lot more restorative practices, which works a lot better.
Yeah. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard.
Madam Superintendent, you have a report for us?
Yes, our, first I wanted to also just piggyback on Mr. Lotaraca's comment and thank the Asbury Park Toy Drive for continuing to celebrate our families, our students, but our families in that process, although I was not able to attend this time, the Mother's Day dinner. It was wonderful. I saw wonderful pictures, many smiling faces, and for many of our family, it's an opportunity to go out to dine at a, at a place, and in some cases, an opportunity that they would never otherwise have, because times are a little strange for them. So many thanks to the Asbury Park Toy Drive. I know Ms. Breach is not here tonight, but a big, big push on that from her, as well as our other board member Barbara Lizinski. So thank you so much for continuing to work with us, not only with the Mother's Day, but we have the Father's Day essay contest coming up as well. So we'll be thanking you again, because you're making a practice of contributing. So thank you in that regard. As it relates to our student enrollment, our student enrollment has been fairly consistent from month to month, as has our student attendance. We started looking at snapshots by the school. So you'll see that we see a decline in our enrollment from last year. So what I shared with you before is month to month. Now, this is, this time this year compared to this time last year enrollment, and based on that, attendance and enrollment, we see decline. So we continue to look for strategic partners and innovative programs that will attract and retain students at that level. Very delighted that we are, have entered into a partnership with Monmouth University's School of Education, specifically for their write-on summer sports program, which was board-approved at the last agenda. Exciting, because it's two two-week programs, and one two-week program is exclusively for Asbury Park School District students. The only cost to us will be transportation, and our students will spend two weeks on the campus at Monmouth University with writing, very comprehensive sports writing, and it ranges from students that need support in writing to our very capable, academically capable students. So it's a very exciting time. I'm pleased that our Director of Curriculum and Instruction has been having these ongoing conversations, and last night, Monmouth University hosted a parent orientation. Our parents were just so excited and elated to hear that this is an opportunity that doesn't bind their students all summer to a program, but it gives them something to do so they're not in the house, and it supports the summer slide, not having that summer slide. So I'm very pleased that we are able to offer that. Our population by ethnicity has increased year to year now. So when we look at it year over year, the red represents this school, this school year, and the blue is from last school year. So again, very pleased to see that we're starting to see a little more diversity in our school district. When I arrived, our district was black and Hispanic. Now we have multiracial, as well as white students attending our district. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions? Okay. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. If you have any comments, please come to the locker. We have three minutes. Three minutes.
Okay. Ernest Manoli, 400 Daley Drive, Asbury Park. So- Trying to think, as an undergraduate at Rutgers, in the Education Department, I was presented with a book. It was called Hatalon Statistics. It was sort of a doctoral dissertation, grew into a publication, that showed how you could pretty much take any data anywhere, in any circumstance, and present it in a way that it'll have the spin that you're looking for, whether it be positive or negative. And so I, I learned a lot from that, and I became very skeptical of statistics in, in my career and in my life, because, for example, in Asbury Park, I feel there's a connection between education, community, policing, et cetera. And so often, when you go to meetings, you'll hear comments, let's say by the police chief, the city manager, that crime is down. And really, if you look at the statistical analysis in New Jersey, when they rate crime, they, they put everyone in a, in a, in a location from 1 to 565. And within that location, you could make movement, you could have less crime, but unless you move out of the location, it's really what we call statistically meaningless. So I, I keep harping on the fact that crime in Asbury Park sort of pervades everything, education, social, community, and unless someone could show me different, for the last 10 years and even longer, Asbury Park remains in a quadrant of the top five of 565 municipalities in New Jersey for crime, violent crime, which pervades schools, pervades the parks, the housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when I read the paper, the local paper, or the Asbury Park Press or whatever, that Asbury's, its crime is down, but you, you have to demonstrate a movement in, in your placement, not within your placement. And I think that's important, and I think is very important to schools.
Thank you for your comments, sir. This now closes public participation.
I, I think, I'd like to respond to that, because we are broadcasting that, and, and the, the point that you're making may be very relevant as far as the city or the statistic that you're looking at goes. However, I, as a state monitor, would like you to know that the district that I have observed since I've been here works very, very hard to keep the violence that you're referring to and the type of incidents out of the school district. The report that was given, I think, emphasized the fact that there are very few incidents that we have to even report to the state because of the type of security and programs that the district is engaged in. So as much as I would agree with you as a state monitor that conditions in any city are important, I fail to see what your point is in terms of the district, because the district cannot in any way police the community. That's a different issue than what is happening in our school districts. So I, I don't, I don't get your point. I mean, are you, are you saying, are you saying that you see this statistic in the district?
Or, it is, okay.
Excuse me, sir. I'm just going to give you one minute to respond. That's it.
With all due respect, as a state monitor, I, I think the assertion that any time you can disassociate a school from the community, it, it can't be demonstrated, meaning-
But, but your point being what?
My point being is that the school environment within the building is, is like a Venn diagram. The, the school, the, the city is like a rectangle.
I would have to, I, I would have to disagree with you. I don't think at all, that, my point is in, in observing our schools. Our schools are not a mirror-
I heard you.
-of the community.
I heard you, but I still have 30 seconds to respond to your response. So I would assert that, I'm not talking about the dedication, and I'm not talking about the enthusiasm that I see here, but you do see that there's very little public here, which is important, and that's usually reflective of a belief that systems in a community are not working. That you could say police, you could say education, et cetera, with no people. Thank you.
I'd just like to add to our state monitor's comment. I want to thank the board for continually, continuously approving those programs that have made significant impacts in the lives of our children. Our motto here is- Our motto here is "Building a Brighter Future." And all the programs that we put in place, including a review of this report, demonstrates that we are making that a reality. We are the personification of that motto. In addition, I am now a resident here and have been for some time, and I go and I frequently attend community events, and I'm very pleased to see many community partnerships, not only with the city, but with the Chamber of Commerce and all of the businesses here in this town. Our students are benefiting from that. When I am on the east side, I see our students, I see our students on the west side, and it all speaks to a very different understanding. We are One Asbury Park, and we have a lot of support in this district. I want to thank the board for constantly supporting that One Asbury Park and ensuring that our students are building a brighter future, not only on the west side, but on the east side, in partnership and in tandem with the city and our community partners. We can only control what we can control, and what we can't control, we've been doing a fantastic job. Thank you for continuing to support where we're trying to go.
This will now close public participation. Our monthly HIV report, is there anything additional that you need to add?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Howard. State Monitor, do you have a report? Okay, thank you. Mr. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President. Can I have a motion for items 10A through D on pages A1 and A2?
Second.
Mr. Lattaraca, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Jones, Mr. Pinkney, Ms. Abes Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good evening, board. I would like to request a consent agenda for items B1 to B11, which includes the addenda.
I'll move it.
Question?
This is for all items B1 through B11, Ms. Lozinski?
I'm going to vote yes on all but B3A. I'm going to abstain from B625, no, and B729, no.
And B629, no? Twenty-seven, thank you.
B, B729, there's a B629. I'm confused now. Hold on.
B7.
It's B7? That's what I have, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pinkney?
Yeah.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yeah.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Also, if there is... If there is any member that would like to go to the conference in Philadelphia, would you please see, or in Washington, please see our superintendent? Thank you.
Thank you, all those motions carry.
And whenever you're ready, Mr. Hastings, your agenda.
Thank you. On page C5, number thirteen, the resolution is going to be adjusted so that we're waiving not custodial fees for fourteen hundred and forty dollars, rather we're waiving the room, area rental fee of five hundred, and equipment of three hundred. With that being said, I'd like to present all items C1, number one through C5, number fourteen.
I'll move it.
Question?
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yeah.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yeah.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
All items carry.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor? Everyone have a very lovely, safe Memorial Day.